Gatto.
Here.
We have a quorum.
The next item is number two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended. And the only thing we have is number thirty-nine updated, and that's the speaker's list.
Move approval.
Then moved and seconded, please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. The next item is three is approving consent agenda that are items three through thirty-one. And tonight, we have four L. Coleman is no. Six B. Coleman is no. Twenty Boss is abstaining. Again, these are routine items that will be acted by one rule called ballot vote without separate discussion unless pursuant to council rules, council requests, and items be removed to be considered separately. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Been moved and seconded, please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. The next item will go into hearings. Item thirty-two on conveyance of a permanent underground electric easement in city property located at fifteen-fifteen Harriet Street to Mid-American Energy Company for the Icon Water Trails Project. We'll take your main comments from the general public. Two minutes per person to speak. Anyone wishing to speak to this?
I see none, Your Honor. I'll move item thirty-two.
Been moved and seconded, please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Item thirty-three on vacation of the East West Alley right-of-way located in the vicinity of two-thirty-two East Sixteenth Court and conveyance to Lynette Quintalia for two-hundred dollars. A is first consideration of ordinance above. We'll take again your main comments. Two minutes per person, up to ten minutes. Anyone wishing to speak?
I see none, Your Honor. I'll move item thirty-three, thirty-three A. In pursuant to Rule forty-two A, I'll waive the second and third reading.
Been moved and seconded, please vote.
Mr. Boss.
You hit it again, Carl.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is thirty-four on request from the Highland Park Community Development Association, Inc., Philip Herman Officer, to rezone thirty-eight fifty-one Sherman Boulevard from N-three-A Neighborhood District to limited N-X-one Neighborhood Mix District to allow the renovation of the existing one-household dwelling and construction of a two-household dwelling and two accessory dwelling units for a total of five residential dwelling units. Require six votes for approval due to relevant property owner opposition. A is the first consideration of ordinance above. B is the final consideration of ordinance above. Waiver requested by applicant. Require six votes. First, we'll entertain parties and interests applicant for rezoning and those within two-hundred-and-fifty feet of the property to be rezoned. Each will be given up to five minutes to speak. Second will be your main comments from the general public. Two minutes per person to speak, twenty minutes maximum. Anyone wishing to speak? Are you within two-hundred-and-fifty feet? An applicant? Yeah, you can go first.
My name is Philip Herman. We are here before you today to request the rezoning of this property. We believe that that will be in the best interest long-term for not only our organization but for this neighborhood of which I am a resident. And we believe that because we believe that we have an opportunity to expand affordable housing in the city. We also believe that this is an opportunity to address some longstanding issues in this neighborhood of which were raised in the neighborhood meeting. And I believe you have heard from some of those residents and may heard here tonight. The ones that were pertinent that we heard from, and I want to address first for you, is stormwater issues. And we believe that this is an opportunity for the city to come alongside our development and really provide relief to the residents in this neighborhood on this issue. This goes all the way along Sherman Boulevard. It goes on Flamengo Court. There are certain areas where the water is standing on heavy rain. There is water that comes from the higher ground along Douglas Avenue down into this area. And so this is a matter that needs some attention. We believe our development can help provide that attention that is needed on that issue. Two, the neighbors have been concerned about parking on Sherman Boulevard, not just for our property but for other residents. We believe that our project provides ample number of parking spaces for the residents. We are going to be a permanent supportive rental complex, which means that we have lease agreements that can stipulate these types of things. So we anticipate not allowing our residents to be street parking and their guests on Sherman Boulevard. We can be notified if that is not being followed, and we would welcome those comments. Third, there has been issues of could we possibly screen the property? Once the property is done, that is our plan. We would like to screen the property both with more than likely a six-foot perimeter fence as well as landscaping. And we would like to do that to maintain a property that is beautiful, and we believe that we can make it more beautiful. And finally, the other issue that has been raised is that we are in an area that is part of Beverdale. It used to be the former Meredith Neighborhood. But when Invest DSM has been applied to this neighborhood, it has been funds applied to the former part of the old part of Beverdale Neighborhood. We believe that there is some proper use of possibly expanding and looking at Beverdale Neighborhood as a whole, of which this is a part of that neighborhood. And we believe that some of these other issues that we're talking about could potentially be looked at underneath that larger Invest DSM umbrella. So we believe that for many of these reasons and for the reasons that the neighbors are raising, that we believe that we can address these concerns. This would be something that we believe would help the residents that we are intending to have live in this neighborhood. And this would be something that based upon grant funding that we are anticipating getting for this project, we would have to keep this affordable housing for the next twenty years. So I will limit my comments unless there's other things that I need to address tonight. Thank you.
Yes. Yeah, Mayor and Des Moines City Council members, I am Fred Walker. I've lived happily at thirty-eight fifty-eight Sherman Boulevard for over forty years. I've always been a loyal Des Moines citizen. All my neighbors love our quiet, safe, and stable Beverdale Neighborhood. The residents are a mix of good-caring people who take great pride in improving and maintaining their homes. We bought our homes in a residential neighborhood and feel betrayed by the attempt to put a large commercial complex on our street. The whole neighborhood is totally against this project. We strongly believe that our majority opposition should have the democratic right to stop this negative change to our neighborhood. We think Des Moines should protect us and keep us zoned for residential usage as originally intended. This proposal would keep the existing one-story-plus-basement dwelling, add a large two-story-plus-basement duplex, and also add two large one-story-plus-basement dwellings. Each dwelling would have four bedrooms, as I understand it. These five units could house up to forty people. These five dwellings would all be rental units. They are all income-producing dwellings. None would be owner-occupied. I was a residential and commercial real estate appraiser for the Iowa Department of Revenue and Finance for thirty-five years. If I appraised this property today, it would meet all the guidelines to be defined as a commercial property. The Iowa Administrative Code classifies this type of property as commercial. I know from my experience that owner-occupied, single-family residential homes contribute to the economic stability of a neighborhood and also to higher property values. A commercial complex does not conform with the residential intent of our neighborhood. The whole character of our neighborhood would change. The property has been poorly managed for the approximate two-and-a-half years it has been under the current owner. Garbage has been all over the yard, knee-high grass left for months until forced to be mowed by the city demands. Out-of-control weeds, piles of wood from cut-down trees, parking on the lawn, extremely loud music, lack of maintenance on the building such as crumbling bricks in the foundation of the existing home, deteriorating windows, tarp that was on the roof for months because of holes caused by blowing over trees, over ten people living in the existing dwelling at one time, little or no oversight on this entire property. In summary, this street was established for residential usage. This commercial complex would be nonconforming to the original residential intent of this neighborhood. There has been a two-and-a-half-year history of little or no oversight on the existing house and lot. In my opinion, as a former real estate appraiser, there are just too many negative reasons to support this rezoning proposal. Please be fair to us and preserve our neighborhood. Vote no on this proposal. Thank you, Mayor and City Council.
Anyone else wishing to speak? If you want to state your name and address?
My name is Dixie DeCarlo. I live at three-nine-zero-eight Sherman, exactly across from thirty-eight fifty-one. My husband and I moved there in February in nineteen-seventy-two, a month after we were married. So I have been there fifty-four years. And when we bought it, I'm originally from Winterset, from the country. So moving to Des Moines was scary, and it took me a long time to learn to drive. But I've learned to love Des Moines. And we bought it because it was close to schools, it was a residential, it was close to businesses, close to where we worked. My husband worked thirty-five years for the city of Des Moines. And in February seventy-two, it was cheap. So that's why we moved there. And at the time, Des Moines told us the zoning would make it a residential area. And it has been that for all these years. And now, if this zoning is approved, it completely takes away the character of our neighborhood. We have kept our part of the bargain with Des Moines. We've kept our homes in good shape. We've kept our lawns in good shape. We've increased the value of our homes. And we just feel that this would take away the character of our neighborhood. And if I may take a minute, being there fifty-four years, I've seen a lot of things. And the one thing I found out about Sherman Boulevard is nobody ever wants to leave. They stay. There's four reasons people leave. The first is they stay there till the day they die. And that's what happened to my husband. Secondly, they get too old. They get too sick. My neighbors around me at one time, the average age was ninety-eight, so they wanted to stay. And the others is job changes, going to senior living. And then the other was bigger home. So this is what the character of Sherman and Flamengo is. And we want to keep it that way. And we're just asking Des Moines to consider us when you think about the rezoning, that it would make an awful big difference to our neighborhood and to the promises that have been made to us that that's what it would stay. So I am asking that that not be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
City Council, my name is Ron Boehner. I live at three-nine-hundred Sherman Boulevard, which is next door to Mrs. DeCarlo, right across the street from this proposed... First of all, I'd like to say I've found a... If you look on the Internet, you can find studies for everything. I have found a few that it does have negative... When you cluster houses like this, it does have a negative impact on property values. One of the other things was, it's already been mentioned, a lot of us have put... I've put seventy to eighty thousand dollars in my house the last five years. You know, so we're working on things, making things better. And I don't think this is going to make those things better. Like Mr. Walker said, we have had problems with the yard. I mean, knee-high grass, trash in the front yard. You know, he's already said a lot of the things I was going to say, which you've already heard. One of the other things, I know, and I can't remember the name of the program that you guys have or whatever it is, but it's basically a food desert in that area. There is public transit, but you're going to be on a bus twenty-five, thirty minutes to get to the nearest grocery store. The nearest doctor is probably the one on Franklin. I don't know if any of you are familiar with the area. It's like a Mercy Clinic on Franklin. You know, there's not a lot of business opportunities in that area for employment. And even that, you know, it's not really a walkable distance for any of that stuff. So I'm with everybody else. I just hope that you would see our side of this and, you know, vote to not approve this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Bozen, City Council. My name is Jim Chalua. I am a dentist to the southeast of the proposed development. I support the neighbors who have been here a lot longer than I have. I'm a recent immigrant to Iowa and Des Moines and Beverdale. The first thing I want to address is the, in the course of the investigation or consideration of this property, the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting was my first kind of experience with local Des Moines politics. And I did not care for the P&amp;Z's treatment of the electorate. The application of shame, quote, "shame on you" to the citizens in the appropriate public forum is inappropriate, in my opinion. And I would ask that it be addressed in whatever way you have at your disposal. The second thing is more specifically to the City Council and the long-term plan, specifically Plan DSM and Invest DSM, which I've been learning as much as I can about for the little time that it's been on my radar. The Highland Park redevelopment, which is through Invest DSM, and maybe I'm not totally understanding everything, but from what I understand, twenty-one million dollars in 2025 to Neighborhood Services and five million specifically to Highland Park and the redevelopment of these neighborhoods, Drake Franklin, Highland Park, those are the ones I remember.
Columbus.
Columbus, thank you. So I think that Mr. Herman has identified a need. It is supported by local and federal grants. So there must be some meat on the bone for affordable housing in Highland Park. But this is not Highland Park. And since the City Council is using our taxpayer money of now, I have a home and a business, so it's getting a little aggressive compared to my net worth, the Highland Park plan and the investment that's happening in Highland Park should include affordable housing. And so by investing all of this money into Highland Park and asking the citizens to trust that you are good stewards of the taxpayer money, redevelop Highland Park, which it's beautiful, and I'm going to brunch there and all the nice things about Highland Park, but then to, for Mr. Herman, lock out affordable housing and move that down the Euclid corridor, all the way down into Beverdale, so that I, as a Beverdale resident, get not the brunch but just the affordable housing. And then we enter into this decades-long cycle of redeveloping different neighborhoods that have different needs. So I think the primary point I would have for City Council is that if the plan for Highland Park is comprehensive, then this should be included in that plan. If the plan for Highland Park is not comprehensive and does not include affordable housing, then Beverdale should not be the neighborhood to collect that aspect of the project. I think affordable housing is important. I think that Mr. Herman has a great mission. I think that the residents have a lot to care about on this very nice street. But I think that the primary thing for City Council is what is the plan for Highland Park? And if it doesn't include affordable housing, then I would ask these halt taking the taxpayer dollars for that project. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hello, Mayor Bozen, members of the City Council. My name is Carol Maher. I live in Ward Three in downtown Des Moines. At this morning's work session, you know, we spent a lot of great, interesting time on the Section Eight housing inventory that we have in the city, which we would all like more of. Seems like every work session, there's some component of affordable housing that we cover here. In the morning, we say great things how we want more of it. And then sometimes in the afternoon, we hear pushback on how we don't want more of it. I hope that you'll remember that we need housing of all types, affordable, market rate, and others throughout the city because we have a severe deficit of housing. And as a renter, I take a little bit of offense when we're kind of thrown under the bus. And renters deserve the good schools and businesses that were mentioned by a couple of speakers here. We deserve to have those things near us, too. So I would encourage you to support these five dwelling units in this area as part of the complex nature of all the housing that we need in the city. Thank you.
If not...
I...
Oh, wait, we have someone else. Are you within the...
Yep.
Two-hundred-and-fifty... Okay.
Yeah. I'm Al Ruble, thirty-eight forty-four Sherman Boulevard, across the street, up a couple houses.
Okay.
When I moved to the neighborhood roughly five years ago, it was a neighborhood. It wasn't one that had apartments, wasn't one that had a lot of multi-housing with multiple people living in it type thing, apartments, we'll just say. I mean, he's putting in houses, as Fred had said, with attached dwellings to the back. So with two to three bedrooms in the house, one or two bedrooms in the attached, you're looking four to five bedrooms apiece. So if you double it up, that's what, ten people? Maybe. Okay, maybe six to ten. Times five dwellings, that's a lot more people on one acre lot. When I bought the house, it's a single-family house roughly under about a half acre. We knew we were getting houses with larger yards. That's what we signed up for. We didn't sign up to have, I'm sorry, five dwellings on that little lot. And that's... The lady that spoke before me, she feels like we're picking on people who live in apartments. It's not that. That's just not what we signed up for. If you want to live in apartment, that's fine. There's places to go. There's other places you can put this type of structure that you want to build. There's other empty lots. It doesn't have to be this one. And then I also have an issue with the management. As it was stated, the yard wasn't mowed until this was all about become public, till we knew about it. That's when the yard started getting mowed, not going to lie. Was worst house on the block, worst yard on the block. People called to have complaints on it. His organization has a couple other lots. You drive by it, you'll see one of them still a hole in the ground. He's had it for a while. Why hasn't that been built? Is that going to happen here? Is that something we're going to have to deal with? A project started, but is it going to get completed? Then you got the danger of the hole. It's going to fill with water. There's kids in the neighborhood, too. Animals, all this stuff. I'm sorry, your management skills have been, for lack of better words, piss poor when it comes to this. Sorry. So that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Heather?
Along my days, Heather Armstrong, I live in Ward Two. The way that this health are having a very big of something in downtown Chicago, even New York City, where you have a lot of people, they're going to build in very tiny apartments where you cannot even walk outside or in these apartments. They consider too crowded. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? I'll turn it over.
As the Ward Council member, I wouldn't mind having a chance to speak to it, if that's all right, Mayor. Oh, go ahead. You had questions? Yeah, go ahead.
This might be sad as much. But one of the things, I guess I want to try and understand what we're talking about here because particularly from some of the comments, I want to make sure I'm following along. Because my understanding, are we talking about they're asking to be able to build five buildings on this parcel? Is that right?
Cody, do you want to come forward? I understood it to be four buildings and remodeling one.
Right, but they're asking for up to five on this parcel. Is that...
Four plus the existing house, right?
Five units, four buildings.
Yeah.
Because one's a duplex.
Four plus the existing, one that's on there, four new buildings?
Okay. Mayor, members of council, Cody Christensen, Development Services Director. The request before you is to rezone the property to allow a duplex and two additional single-family dwellings to be constructed on this property.
Is there accessory dwellings behind it? Two also, or no?
No, that's the whole proposal. The thing to keep in mind is to compare what the rezoning would allow to what would be allowed by right today. So today, this lot could be split in two, and three additional structures could be built on the two resulting parcels. Right now, we have one house. It's the primary dwelling. So city code would allow the property to be split in two, into two separate lots, another primary structure to be built, single-family home, and then each could have a detached accessory housing unit built in the rear yard. So that is what could be done today by right with no council action, with no rezoning.
But not a duplex.
Not a duplex.
Not a duplex.
Correct.
I have these type of units all over the South Side, where there is single-family homes, just like this neighborhood. There's a mix and match all throughout my ward, just like this.
Yep. There's duplexes all over town.
Yeah, all over in the middle of residential area that has been done years ago, probably when, in the seventies, when they were, in the eighties, when they were buying their houses. That was mixed in with a lot of the dwellings we have on the southeast side.
So just to be clear, this rezoning is really only about one unit? One additional? I mean, it's configured slightly differently, but this is really about one unit?
Yes. The benefit of the rezoning is that would allow an additional unit beyond what could be done today by right.
Okay. And in terms of the density, we have like a measure number of units per acre, right, that typical residential neighborhoods hit? Is that...
That's identified on our land use plan, low-density residential. I can't tell you off the top of my head what that number is.
Okay. Because I saw some discussion about this at P&amp;Z. But what I was hoping to get an answer to is would the difference between four and five change that? four and five change that in terms of, does that still meet the, the same residential density?
I'd have to check on that to be sure, but I do believe it would be still, it would still fall within that, the same density that's there today.
Okay. And then I don't, I don't know if staff is going to have the, the answer to this, but I'm, I'm just curious, particularly, we're taking parcels similar to this in other parts of town as part of Invest DSM. And one of the, I think, better parts of Invest DSM is, we're taking parcels like this and building sometimes two and three units on them. Do you know if we've, we've built with Invest DSM any parcels with the kind of density that they're proposing?
Some, some of what Invest DSM has done is taken a 60-foot wide lot and split it into two 30-foot wide lots, which would be.
Not to this density. They're all single-family.
They're not rentals.
Well, these are single-family, too. They're, they're just going to be used as rentals.
No, but there was a duplex, too, right?
Yeah, they've, they've done some.
No, I mean, Invest DSM hasn't, but I mean.
Hasn't done a duplex, is your point. Okay.
They've done some primary single-family homes with an accessory, accessory housing unit on the same property.
The homes that Invest DSM have constructed are single-family homes built in the character of the neighborhood.
Right, but these would be single-family homes, too, right? I'm just trying to ascertain what the difference is, if there's.
I would add one other difference, just a technicality, and I think we live this all the time. I, I have talked to the developer and the neighbors about this, but in the ADU regulations, you're limited to the size of those. And so the two units that would be ADUs would be smaller units and more in conformance with the houses that are in the area now from a, you know, size, bedroom, square foot, how, how big they are. So, so yes, four units, but two of them would probably be relatively smaller than what's proposed here.
If you wanted to adjust, if, if you wanted to build the same square footage and you didn't get the rezoning tonight, you could up the size of the main buildings and have bigger, bigger main buildings and slightly smaller accessory, or it, it would increase the size of the accessory dwelling unit as well.
Because one building exists already, that ADU couldn't be more than.
That's true.
So I look like, at least one of them is, is space limited.
Is going to be smaller. That, that, that's a good.
If we, if we turned down the application, that's under the, that alternative. Cody, while you're up, I do have one question, too. And for, the council is able to ask questions ahead of the meeting. I asked a question and you or somebody answered it, but just for the public's benefit, there has been talk about stormwater, parking, and other issues. And the developer, Mr. Herman, said it, I wrote it down, this project gives us a long-term opportunity to, this gives us an opportunity to address long-term issues in the neighborhood. When we talk about stormwater management, others, those are opportunities that the developer has and not the city. Is that correct?
That's correct, Councilmember Coleman. Whenever development triggers stormwater controls, those, those stormwater improvements are the responsibility of that developer to install. And that is one of the, that's one of the conditions that the Plan and Zoning Commission recommended for this, is that any, if this property is rezoned, that one of the conditions be that the stormwater management systems be designed and installed in, to the acceptance of the city engineer.
Yeah, I, I watched the P&amp;Z meeting. I, I share some frustration in, in the way that the people were treated that I represent, and that's not the first time that's happened over projects in, in Ward One and around the city. But I was, like, I, I do think that that opportunity to fix it was not clear before the commission, that the developer was talking as if the city could fix it, and the city was talking as if the developer could fix it, and all everybody agreed to was, well, good, it's going to get fixed. But I don't see, I don't see, I don't see there being a budget on either side of this equation from the city or the developer where we're going to be able to address issues that the neighbors full well know. The city's been in long lawsuits over this area and how water is treated there. There are some large parking lots that existed and are grandfathered in that, that spill a whole bunch of water into this neighborhood. And we, we did have one development that solved the problems at their lot that eventually needed a connection through a private property to fully manage it. The problems are significant and real. This morning, we talked about the stormwater improvements that we've made, over $200 million since Steve Neber was a city engineer, I think he said this morning. We're, we're doing our best to solve these. This is an area that has not been solved. Putting this much parking and, and, and a private street through there to serve all of the properties is going to add, it's going to make that issue worse, I think. And we don't have a plan to deal with that.
Yeah, and, and too, I do want to clarify, too, with the stormwater, any stormwater improvements that are made or that are triggered by this development, those are really focused on what happens on this property. So if there are stormwater issues that exist, this development is not likely to trigger additional improvements that would take care of, of stormwater issues that come from the surrounding area.
Thank, thank you. And, and I, I'm aware of that, too, which means the problem, you know, the problem is going to flow through this current vacant property. We've bought a lot of properties to absorb water around the city for reasons that we don't. And here, we're talking about putting a lot of density and rooftops and, and cement that currently absorbs a lot of that water and saves a tremendous amount of, I mean, we have a big water problem there on Flamingo Court, Sherman, as it gets down to Madison. All, all the neighbors can recount and show pictures of what's happened over the last decade. I, I just see this as being a, a problem that the water is going to move quicker and faster with nobody responsible for fixing or addressing the underlying condition.
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
Related to that. So P&amp;Z recommended, if it's rezoned, to address the stormwater with a condition. And so if it's not rezoned, that condition doesn't exist. Is that right?
That, that's correct.
And could we go beyond the requirements and that, with that condition, could we go beyond the requirements that would be in place if, for whatever is triggered with by Wright Development?
That would, the way that condition was written was it leaves it up to the city engineer. Probably need to get Steve's take on this.
What?
If he wants to.
I, I mean.
What, what he would be comfortable with.
Nothing's been passed. I mean, if we wanted to fix it, would we have the ability, regardless of how the current condition is being interpreted, if we wanted to go farther and make an effort to actually fix the stormwater issues in the neighborhood, could we make that a condition of rezoning? Could we make additional stormwater?
And to put that cost on the developer?
Correct.
Which is going to be hundreds of thousands or a million dollars, like.
Any condition that's added to this rezoning?
Would have to be tied to the property.
And would need to be approved by the developer before it could go through.
Yeah. Right.
Now let me.
If the developer wanted to rezone and was serious about solving the problem. Because I, I heard the developer say this was an opportunity to solve the problem, and I've heard the ward council member say that the only way this problem actually gets solved is if there is investment in a serious plan, which may not actually be in what's in front of us.
Well, I, I think there's two ways to solve it. One, one is, is, is determining to leave as much of it as, as land that can absorb the water that's coming out of the area, which is, which is the condition right now. And, and I think it's probably better than it was 10 years ago because of the stormwater improvements that have been made. Can I ask one question, though, related to this? If, 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 if I came in to build a building, a commercial or residential building, under normal circumstances, I have to manage the water that it creates? And so, so it's not as if the developer wouldn't, would only have to manage the water if we rezoned it? He'd have to, under current regulations as well?
That, that's true, but the devil's in the details. So talking about single-family, developing a single-family lot, the level of review of stormwater management for a home or an accessory dwelling unit being placed in the backyard is much less than that level of review that's done for a project like this that is more dense, that goes through a rezoning process.
But, but I mean, I think your initial answer was, yes, it's required, but the devil's in the detail. In this case, it wouldn't, it wouldn't necessarily be one single-family house. We're, we're talking about the scenario by which we build a house and two ADUs where, where I think it should trigger staff to take a good look at what the stormwater management would be when you have driveways and rooftops that are that significant.
I have a question about the ADUs. I, I thought we passed an ordinance that they have to be owner-owned, right? At least either the house or the ADU has to be owner-owned. They can't all be rented.
That was our policy. The state changed the law to make it available to anybody.
Okay. That answers my question, because I thought we had something. This wouldn't.
Evan, just another question on, on timing of this. I mean, since really all we're talking about is one additional unit, is there anything that prevents the property owner from building the first three units and then coming back and asking for the rezoning again later after, after those first three units are built by Wright?
No, the request could be made at any time for rezoning.
So, so if this was about the housing, we could just let him build the housing, and if, if he's proving the concept, he could come back again and, and make this request, and the neighbors would have the benefit of seeing what type of project he's built, at least for the first phase of it?
Yeah, that, that would be an option.
No.
For clarity, though, Councilman, it would change the building type because he's proposing a duplex. So it.
Right.
The site plan would.
It would look a little different, but he could do most of what, what is talking about here that way and come back.
Well, we have a request before us.
Right, right.
I, thank you, Mike, the mayor. I, I, you can stay there, but I don't have a question for you.
You can go have a seat, I guess.
All right, thank you.
You have pictures you want to show.
First off, I want to acknowledge what a lot of people have already said. We need affordable housing. We need projects. I've always been of the spirit that the council should be pro-development, pro-growth, but it's, but it's also our job to make sure that it's high-quality and sustainable into the future growth. And, and I, I just want to talk about this project a little bit more from a couple of different vantage points. When we do projects like this, I think we want to know that if we're going to take a gamble and take a risk, when neighbors are against it, we can have the utmost confidence that it's going to be delivered in a way that is strong and good. I appreciate the mission and the work of nonprofits that are helping our community. The city has benefited, especially in housing, by a number of them, and I, I value, Phil, what you and the Highland Park Development Corp., I think I got that right, are doing. But I am not a supporter of this project. I've thought long and hard about it, and it comes down to this. Somebody, somebody referenced this, but I think to do a project that is daring and a risk, you have to earn the right to do it. And I think as a property owner on Sherman Boulevard where this is, and on the east side of Des Moines, we're falling way short. And I can't take that gamble with citizens that are already unease about the way in which the council might want to change their neighborhood. And, and I'll, I'll share a couple of details. I'll, I'll pass this around. Jeff, I don't know if you have advice for me, if I should show the public these pictures as well?
That would be best.
I, I just, I just want to be transparent with the council and the public, I guess. The, the company that, that Phil is a part of and a leader of has done some other projects in town. Linda and I have been in conversation this weekend because we were interested in a project on the east, on the east side. This is Amherst. I think this church is on Madison. Well, I don't know what the side street is, that the childcare center is on. But, but this, this was a permit taken out in 2023 for a house where the basement is there. This is a neighborhood filled with kids and families that is sat, that's sat like this. You, you can see it a little bit more carefully. I understand that projects get complicated, things happen that are different. But as you go through these pictures, I want you to pay particular attention to the fence. I'm aware that over the last couple of years, the city's been out with enforcement action, and I think we have over $1,500 worth of fines and other actions against the, the property owner, which in this case is the applicant on the west side in, in, on Sherman Boulevard. But you'll see the fence is on its side in a number of places. That's going into a negroes window. There's another, there's another spot, somebody had mentioned, that water builds up in, in facilities like this. It's, it's a danger, and I think, I think the execution on these projects has not been strong enough to earn my support. And I think it's a gamble that, that is a risk. It's a daring project, one that I wish that I could support, but you can see that from managing the silt to buttoning up the project, to not getting the project done, I know that the applicant has spoke with different members of our city staff to try and find additional funding and other things. I am aware that maybe he was able to obtain a grant and has a fundraising process underway for this project in, in, on the east side, on Amherst. But I'm, I'm, I can't tell you that I have enough confidence to vote yes for a project that I'm not sure can be executed in a high-quality way that we can defend to our citizens and these neighbors over the next five, 10, and 20 years. So for that reason, I'll go sit down, but for, for, and we had a long conversation about the ADUs. It's actually not a state law that, that I'm in love with. I like the plan that the city council passed, different sizes, requirements, you have to go through more of a process of disclosure and transparency with neighbors. Nonetheless, it's a state law that in this case works to the advantage of the nonprofit and greater housing. So again, I don't view this as being anti-affordable housing. I have supported a ton of affordable housing. I've also opposed a couple of projects where I thought they were asking for 20, 25% more than what the neighborhood load should be, and if this is a case like that. So I'm going to move to deny the application. Staff will work with the developer, I'm sure, on what a Plan B would be, but my motion would be to deny the application, and I welcome any comments or.
Anyone?
Second?
Okay. Anyone else would like to speak? Yes.
I just want to address to the dentist there. Highland Park Community Development has nothing to do with Invest DSM. They have very similar names, but it has nothing, one has nothing to do with the other. So Invest DSM has, has made the Highland Park Oak Park neighborhood part of their investment area where we do have affordable housing and, and there's been a lot going on. But I just wanted to make the clarification, it has nothing to do with Highland Park Development Company. So I hope that's helpful.
Yes.
No, that's, it's okay. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? If not.
I'd just like to speak, and I, I will ultimately support Councilmember Coleman on this as, as the ward council member. I, I think, I, I just want to kind of contextualize this in, in our larger housing discussion. this in, in our larger housing discussion. Because I think in other instances, we would support this very same type of proposal. And when we're talking about land use, it's, the applicant shouldn't necessarily matter. It should matter whether or not the land use fits. And if there are other instances where the land use does fit, and, and I in particular would be inclined to support, support this from a, a land use perspective. I also think it's just weird that we have a proposal in front of us that is really ultimately arguing about one, one unit that, that, and if, if the applicant is serious about providing the protection and the improvement that he is, that he's talking about providing, he'd go and build this and demonstrate to the, to the neighbors exactly the quality of the project. And then we could come back and argue about this one unit. And if he's built something that adds value to the neighborhood, my guess is the folks here would take a look at that and we wouldn't have the same kind of fight over this one unit. So it's a little odd that this is being presented to us in, in this manner as well. But, but I think we just need to be mindful of, of, of the precedence. And I think this type of density can work. I also, I know some folks expressed concern about, about rentals. And I think a mix, if done right, rentals in neighborhoods can, can work just fine and, and can add value to the neighborhood, particularly if you get nice new, new rentals in parcels that have been undeveloped. So I, I, I don't know that this project is that far off. And I think it's kind of, we have something in front of us, so we have to decide. But if the applicant is serious about developing a good project, you're, there's a lot that can be built by right today. Doesn't even have the same conditions. We could maybe be doing more to address stormwater if we rezoned, but we can come back and do that if there's another rezoning in the future. And demonstrate the value of this project. I mean, I think we all want to see high-quality, good housing in our community. And if you build three good units like you can by right today, and you go back to the neighbors and you come back to us with something that makes sense, probably have, you might have a shot at getting that. But why not just do the work that you can today under the existing law and demonstrate, demonstrate that? And so that, that's the reason I'm supporting Councilmember Coleman with this motion. I think we'd all like to see more housing. I think we'd like to try and make sure that these decisions are, were consistent from one, one to the next, although the facts of individual applications frequently have a lot to do with how, the deliberation and how we end up voting.
Just, just real quick, Mayor, just a quick comment, because my first comment was, these are all over the southeast side of Des Moines. And so I was in agreement with you as a developer, because we do need more affordable housing. Some of Josh's comments were, were right on cue. But after looking at those pictures, and you've got a basement sitting there since 2022 that you did nothing with, and there's not even a fence, or 2023?
Yeah.
There's, I mean, that, that tells me a lot right there. And so I, I will, I, I can't, I can't support it going forward just because of that, to be honest with you. No other reason but that. So I would encourage you to maybe fill in that basement, get that framed up, and, and move on and maybe do what Josh said. And you can build three by right there if you really want to solve a housing issue. So.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
Seven yes to deny the rezoning.
The next item is item 35. On request from Joppa Jim Heggberg Officer to amend the Plan DSM creating our tomorrow comprehensive plan to revise the future land use classification from business park, public, semi-public, and parks and open space to low, medium density residential for parcels located in the vicinity of 2501 Maury Street, and to rezone from EX Mixed Use District, P2 Public Civic and Institutional District, and I1 Industrial District to limited RX1 Mixed Use District to allow a future development that includes permanent and temporary homes and associated uses. A is first consideration of the ordinance above. B is the final consideration of the ordinance above. We've requested by Dwayne Myers, Real Estate Division Manager, requires six votes unless abstention reduces the number requirement per Iowa Code, Section 38.42. Anyone wishing to speak to this?
Mayor, I see none. We've had a lot of discussion about this. And, you know, we've, we've gone around and thanked a lot of people from, you know, our partners at the WRA, partners at Pope County, Joppa, Joe. I'm happy to move this and to get this. I think this is the last one, right? Before we can start fundraising and moving forward and, and get some things done. So I'm happy to move 35A and B.
And this is for what we're proposing, like 50 units?
Right.
Probably?
To start with.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
Six yes, one abstain.
Motion carries. 36. On lease agreement with Kemen Holdings LC for use of city-owned property located north of and adjoining 2200 Maury Street for $100. Anyone wishing to speak to this?
I see none, Your Honor. I'll move item 36.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Item 37. On the proposed 2026 action plan as part of the 2025 to 2029 consolidated plan for the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Council Communication Number 25-409. Anyone wishing to speak to this?
I see none, Your Honor. I'll move item 37.
It's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
Speaking of affordable housing.
There you go.
Seven yes.
Lots of it.
Item 38. On Third and Court, Skywalk Quarter HVAC Replacement Resolution approving plan specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, receiving file bids, and designating the lowest responsive, responsible bidder as All Iowa Mechanical LLC. James Vion CEO, $102,900. Council Communication Number 25-400. A is approval of contract and bond. Anyone wishing to speak to this?
General.
We have somebody that wants to speak. You have two minutes.
Mayor, Members of the City Council, my name is Carol Maher. I live in Ward 3 in downtown Des Moines. I apologize, my remarks today are not well-prepared, timed out, and I was out last minute canvassing today. So, $100,000 for HVAC seems like a lot of money, even though then it's less than the estimate. Wouldn't it be great not to have to pay for maintenance of these babies, the skywalks that were built, I'm sure during the time when people drove in from west Des Moines, parked their car, got in the skywalk, walked to their office. They came in at eight, they left at five. That doesn't happen anymore, right? They were built for a work week model that doesn't exist. Those suckers are anti-urban development. They take away vitality from the street. They take away eyes on the street. They create this darkness overhead that is not positive for how you want to have a downtown. And I hope that we, in addition to parking garages and ramps that we love to have downtown and hold on to, that we'll consider at one point tearing those suckers down, so those skywalks down, so we don't have to maintain them. On a side note, I bet that when the news broke that 515 Walnut Tower had no money, I hope we did two things right away. Make sure that we hadn't given out any TIF money yet. And two, immediately stopped any funding or action on the Kokamame Skywalk we talked about putting up to that building. We, we didn't want, we wanted to delay it, prove some money for thinking about it. We should stop all that money. Thank you.
I'll move item 38, 38A.
It's been moved and seconded. Please vote. You can redo Councilman Gatto's.
Seven yes.
Okay, the motion carries. The next item is the request to speak. Let me read that. We provide speakers under the public speaking portion the opportunity to address the council for up to three minutes each for up to 20 speakers for a total of one hour. Speakers will be called forward individually, and we ask everyone to please state their name and address or ward prior to providing comments. Please keep comments germane and avoid references to personalities or character attacks, as those types of comments do not contribute to the purpose for which this public forum exists. And I think we have one speaker, Heather Armstrong.
Hello, my name is Heather Armstrong. I live in Ward 2. I want to thank my landlord for helping me and my husband when I fell onto the floor on Thursday. I think that was a great thing that my landlord did. So I want to thank her. Thank her. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Okay, with that.
39, 39A.
Is there a second?
Josh's second.
Okay. Please vote. Is there, I think that's it.
Seven yes.
Motion adjourned, Your Honor.
Hall and眾?
Aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.